The allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll talk about this tonight.
Bunton?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Fournier?
Here.
Krapp?
Here.
Mensah?
Here.
Okay, now schools acknowledgements and communications and reports, do we have any this evening?
I do have a few meetings to announce. The Beautification Commission will meet on Thursday, August 9th at 7:00 here at City Hall. The Zoning Board of Appeals meeting scheduled for August 7th has been canceled. The Planning Commission meeting and the Historical Commission meeting that were scheduled for August 8th have both been canceled. And on August 15th, the Housing Commission will meet at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. And that's all I have. Thank you. Oh, thank you. Anybody else? Adoption of the agenda, I need a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Row call. Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Okay, this is public participation time, you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, your residential address, and that you adhere to our three-minute rule. So, the mic is open.
Okay, so I'm Lisa Maholic, and residential address would be 23600 Sutton's Bay Drive in Clinton Township. And I'm actually here, I was here three years ago because I'm the owner of the Jazzercise Fitness Center in Mount Clemens, and we were opening our storefront at 273 North Grozpec. And we are moving into the community center. So, we're very excited about it, and I just wanted to come in and thank all of you for making this happen, allowing this to happen, Lisa and Jeff and the mayor. I'd like to invite all of you, we're gonna have a grand opening celebration. Our first class will be on Monday, August 13th, and we're gonna be running 28 fitness classes a week, which, the community of Mount Clemens, we invite all the residents to come in and try out the classes. At the grand opening, we'll be offering this as a free event for the community. We'll be holding the event on August 18th, a grand opening from 8:00 till 11:00. We'll have two classes at 8:30 and 9:30. Anybody's welcome to try the classes for free, or just come to the event and check it out and see what Jazzercise is all about. We'd like to do a ribbon cutting right after our 9:30 class, so around 10:45. We're really excited about this and we want to celebrate this. We'll have refreshments. The thing we like about being in Mount Clemens, we've actually been in Mount Clemens for seven years. We started out at the Mount Clemens Ice Arena. We were upstairs tucked away in a little corner, holding classes, and then we moved to our current address at 273 North Grozpec, and now we're moving across the street to the community center. Being in Mount Clemens, we actually are able to provide this fitness opportunity for people in all the surrounding communities. We get residents from Clinton Township, Mount Clemens of course, Harrison Township, New Baltimore, Chesterfield, people are coming from all these other cities into Mount Clemens to take our fitness classes. So, I think I've told you everything, and we're really excited, you can't tell.
You're just always like that anyway.
Kind of, sort of, yeah, but I think that's all the information. So, we'd love for everybody to come, just pop in, check it out. If you can't make it on August 18th, stop by, see what we're doing. No, that's not it. What I wanted to say is, we will take really, really good care of the community center. It's gonna be neat, it's gonna be organized, we're gonna be very professional, and I think you'll be happy to have us there.
Well, good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. It's raining.
Good evening, Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. I really don't have a concern, but I'd just like to read something. "Every moment is an organizing opportunity. Every person a potential activist, every minute a chance to change the world." Those are statements by Dolores Huertos. I'd like to say, we have a role to support our community, our city, by getting out to vote, now and in November. Whether most people realize, well, it's just another day. No, it's not just another day. It's a day to be part of the business, of the city, of the state, of the country. You have an important voice, and two things that are very important, your voice and your vote. And as a community, let's step up and start utilizing them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Administrative responses, we have none this evening. I need a motion to approve the minutes from previous meetings.
Move to approve the City Commission meeting minutes from July 16, 2018.
Support.
Row call, please. Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yep.
Bunton?
Yes.
General Business 9A, request approval of the sale of vacant city-owned lots, 16 Stapleton, 88 Gibbs, and North Walnut Lots, 051112354008 and 009. I need a motion?
Move to approve, move to authorize the sale of 16 Stapleton, 88 Gibbs, and North Walnut Lots, 051112354008 and 009, to the listed individuals and to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the necessary documents executing the sale.
Support.
City administration is recommending that the City Commission authorize the sale of vacant city-owned lots as follows. 16 Stapleton Street for $500 to Craig Dunlop, resident of 14 Stapleton Street; 88 Gibbs Street, $750 to Nick Bobbitt, resident of 54895 Fairchild Road in Macomb Township; and North Walnut Lots, 05-11-12-354-008 and 009 for $500 to Clifford Brown, resident of 209 North Walnut Street. If approved, the city attorney will prepare the appropriate settlement statements and quitclaim deeds.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Fournier?
I do have a question. When these properties are going up for sale, is there a public notice, or is there bidding, or how do you determine, how do they, how can you be aware of them, I guess I should say?
Well, in the past, the city has listed the properties for sale.
On the regular?
With the real estate. I believe in this circumstance, the city was approached by these.
Okay. Brian, did you wanna?
Yeah. Yeah, several years ago, we've done it, we've tried several different ways. We've tried where we've contacted all abiding property owners to the lots that the city owned. You know, we probably only sold one or two that way. We then did list with the real estate broker, all the vacant lots at that time. I think through that process, we only sold one. So now, they're basically walk-ins. We do have a list available in community development. We have a form that people fill out, that you see in the agenda packet. So when people do come in, express an interest, we give them that form, any other information they have about the lot, and then they're free to make the offer as they see fit.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensah?
I think Mr. Tingley answered my question, but my question was about the Gibbs property. I wondered if there was any neighbors, or some people in the street, on the street that wanted to buy it before, you know, the street of before or after?
We've talked to several neighbors. Obviously, we didn't canvass, you know, the entire neighborhood for a buyer. The city has owned it now for a couple of years, and this was the first offer that we've received.
Commissioner Ford?
And I can add that Mr. Bobbitt, his construction company does own other properties in the city. They've been fixing them up. I know one of them is an older home, New Street, 95 New Street. His company's been fixing that up, and I believe he does intend on building a new house at the property.
Commissioner Ford?
I hate to ask this, but do these people know they have to cut the grass, and when it snows, they gotta move the snow? They just can't leave it on the sidewalk?
They're aware of that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Row call, please. Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
No.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
9B, request approval of a resolution to support the Fix the Damn Roads Coalition. Need a motion?
Move to approve the resolution supporting the Fix the Damn Roads Coalition and forward the same to the Office of the Governor and Michigan Legislature.
Support.
A group of public administrators from Macomb County met with legislators in Lansing and left feeling that there is little hope that our state representatives and state senators will come up with a solution to fund road and infrastructure issues. Therefore, the Fix the Damn Roads Coalition was formed by four founding members. Centerline City Manager Dennis Champagne, Advancing Macomb Director Melissa Roy, Sterling Heights City Manager Mark Vanderpool, and Clinton Township Deputy Supervisor Elizabeth Vogel. It is the intention of the Coalition to reach out to and align local communities, simplify and raise awareness for sustainable infrastructure funding, hold statewide leaders accountable to implementing a solution, and make this a top priority for the November elections.
Comments, questions? Seeing none, row call, please. Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
9C, approve purchases and payment of invoices. Need a motion?
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, row call, please. Fournier?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Row call, please. Krapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
City Managers Report?
The state primary election will take place on Tuesday, August 7, 2018. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. For precinct information, please contact the city clerk's office at 586-469-6818, option 3. Please note that Precinct 5, from Constance Community, Jermaine Jackson Center, will be voting at City Hall for this election. Please join us for the Downtown Sight &amp; Sound Concert on Friday, August 10th, featuring Nightline. The concert, sponsored by Mount Clemens Downtown Development Authority and Pettiprint Incorporated, will begin at 7:00 PM. The 138th Annual Old Crowd Parade will take place on Thursday, August 16th, at 9:00 AM. The old crowd will gather on Main Street and Macomb Place before the parade begins. Rolling street closures in the downtown will take place while the parade is en route. And the city welcomes the following new businesses. Progressive Medical Clinic located at 318 Crocker Boulevard; Q Stride located at 59 North Walnut Street; The Nest Collaborative located at 66 Macomb Place; and May's Breakfast and Brunch located next door at 64 Macomb Place. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, and are you questions?
Is May's actually open?
Not yet, I don't think.
Very close.
Very close, very close. Okay. Right, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Mensah?
Well...
Now, I have one thing I wanna say, so if you start to talk about it, I'm gonna cut you off.
I was gonna say something about the Victorian Tea.
No, go right ahead.
So, I was, I ended up at the Victorian Tea and Fashion Show, and I had told the mayor, you know, I'm not really a fashionable person, but I went anyway, and it was a lot of fun. I wasn't a good waitress in high school, and I proved that that's still the case. I was serving tea and all kinds of stuff, and I'm still not a good waitress. But I really did a good job at the end of the night with mopping the floor. It was wonderful. It was a sold-out event, there was a lot of people, it was a lot of ladies. It was a very nice event, I wish everybody had the opportunity to go. So, back and forth on, you know how Facebook is, but back and forth, there's been some incorrect, inaccurate information about our high school sports and athletics on Facebook. There is an athletic program. And in fact, the Baters Football has their first game Friday, the 24th. It's a home game against Detroit Leadership. They have another one Friday, the 31st, another home game against Universal Academy. Our sports are not dead. The Lady Baters Volleyball Team is playing a game on the 24th at 5:00. It is a home game, and it's against Harper Woods. They're also playing on the 30th, Thursday, the 30th, at 5:00 PM, another home game at Austin Catholic. Come out and support your school. We are, they are absolutely playing games. It would be really nice, and I'm sure they would appreciate it, to see some residents and some friends and family in, you know, in the audience there. Come out and root for your high school. I wanted to say thanks to Harold Vic Funeral Home for having a memorial service for three American veterans that have no families to bury them. There was Navy Seaman 1st Class Cyril Brown, who served in World War II; Air Force Airmen 2nd Class Gerald Sutkus, who served in Vietnam; and Army Private Thomas Novak, who died in service during peacetime. It's important that we honor our veterans who sacrificed, and I really thank Harold Vic for stepping up to it, and all of the approximately 120 residents, businesses, and veterans that showed up in support of that. I thought it was an awesome thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford?
One Bakersfield defender mine saw me on the street and stopped me. They asked me to go to a 208 northbound wall, an empty house. He said there was a problem there. So I went and looked at the home, it was a vacant home that had a bunch of stickers on the door, and the windows and everything. So I went to the back, and the meter's can was ripped off the wall, exposed wires. So that was a problem. So I came up and asked Mr. Woods, would he check it out? Mr. Woods sent Laura Emerson to the house. The problem basically is, the city has to stop putting stickers on these vacant houses to let the scrappers know it's okay to break in there and steal stuff. The second thing, the problem I have is, a couple hours ago, we had a shooting on Gibbs, Dickerson, and Rathbone. Three people were involved, one was shot, not seriously. All I'm asking the people to do is, if you see something going on in your neighborhood, call the sheriff. Don't let, well, I don't wanna get involved, just call the sheriff. You don't have to give your name or anything. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier?
Yes, I was very interested in that Coalition to fix the damn roads because I will do anything I can to help them. I'm not sure exactly what they're going to do, or how they're going to approach this, but it is a serious problem at all levels of government, and we've gotta do something. But I also want to remind all of our residents that fixing the damn sidewalks in the city is our problem, and it's our responsibility, both the city, in that the downtown sidewalks need to be fixed up, and the residents in their neighborhoods, if you have a sidewalk problem. We've made some progress in the last few years, I, absolutely. But for those of us that are walkers, we know we got a little ways to go yet. And please, if you have a sidewalk that is a problem, don't wait till somebody falls and gets hurt, or a child trips with their bike, or the city comes and forces you to do it. Let's take a look at them, see what we can do, and get these sidewalks fixed. To borrow another phrase, "Let's get it done." And I too want to remind everyone to vote tomorrow, it's very important. Those of you that haven't already done your absentee ballots, like me, please get out there and vote. And it's an important responsibility, along with fixing the sidewalks. And one other thing too, I want to thank the city for the tea. I was also there, working alongside Commissioner Mensah and the mayor, and serving tea, but I just have to say that it was a great event. I enjoyed it so much, I had so much fun at it. And I want to commend Lisa and the Bicentennial Committee, and everyone who put all the effort into that tea, because it really was an outstanding event, and maybe one we need to repeat. It's a fundraiser! Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. See you at polls.
I think she volunteered.
Just what you wanted to hear.
I still have teacups all over. Commissioner Bunton?
First of all, I'd like to compliment the Fire Department. The North Broadway Church of Christ had a group of Fire Department personnel come out and give us a safety inspection. They did it for free, and they noted a number of things that we needed to do to keep our edifice in good standings, in good shape, and to prevent any future fires, or any fires at all, actually. So, congratulations to them and the good work that they do. One of my pet peeves is, please do not put your trash out before the evening, prior to your pickup date. It really, really looks tacky and ugly for the city when some trash is out and some are not. Stuff along the sidewalks are just, it looks bad when somebody drives down that road. So, I don't know if we need to start citing the people who are doing that to make the point across, but we do need to clean up that little act. And as I always do, according to Google, some bizarre and unique holidays for the month of August. First of all, for the month of August, it's Family Fun Month. It's also National Peach Month. It's also National Romance Awareness Month, and National Picnic Month. Some of the days of the month that might be interesting to you. August 10th is National Lazy Day. That's one that should go pretty well. August 11th, National President Joke Day. That's a day where the president is supposed to give out some great jokes. August 11th is also Sons' and Daughters' Day, a day to spend with your children. It's a day of your gift being your time, as opposed to something else. August 12th, National Middle Child Day. I'm a middle child, so for that one, please make a middle child in your life feel very special on that day. August 14th and 15th, kind of a combination. On the 14th, the Emperor of Japan cabled the United States government, notifying it of their surrender to end World War II. That's VJ Day, considered. But also, on the 15th is when it was announced to the world that the war had ended. And actually, on September 2nd, 1945, is the formal surrender ceremony for victory over Japan. So that's a day that you can consider. Now, August 16th, National Tell a Joke Day. On a more serious note, tomorrow, November 7th, is primary election day for the county, the state, and national offices.
August 7th. You said November.
Did I say November?
Yeah.
That's all right.
I'm rushing that, November's the other election, but it's later than that. Okay. Back again. So, anyway, back into it. Many countries are ruled by dictators, and the people do not have a choice on who will rule their future. Yet, less than 50% of our population will go to the polls and vote during this midterm primary election. If you don't vote, you will allow others to choose how you will live the rest of your life. Please go out to the polls in this primary election and choose for yourself who you want to make the political decisions that will affect your life. And so, please keep that in mind and go out and vote. And lastly, Commissioner Wisdom. "There are no shortcuts to any place worthy of going." And that's by Beverly Sills. And with that, we'll say goodnight.
Thank you. Commissioner Krapp?
Today, the consent agenda, we approved the Anton Art Party, Anton Art Center Party. And beginning tomorrow, at the Anton Art Center and at the Anton Art Center's website, you can now purchase art party tickets. The party will be September 20th. It will be located in the parking lot next to the art center with some very big tents, and it's a wonderful party that has a lot of local restaurants that you get to try many different types of foods from local restaurants in Mount Clemens, but also surrounding Mount Clemens. If you would like to purchase tickets, or you are a business, or a private person who would like to make a donation to the party and be a sponsor, please contact Phil Gilchrist at the Art Center at 586-469-8666. On next Tuesday, August 14th, at 9:30 AM, I will host my Commissioner Coffee Talk at John's Family Grill. That one is my morning edition of the Coffee Talk. And then on Thursday, August 16th, at 7:30 PM, I will be there as well at John's Family Grill. I'm excited to see the Jazzercise program moving into the community center. I think it's a very underutilized building, and also, I frequent, although not as much as I should, Jazzercise. And I feel as though they are a very professional organization, and I'm excited that they will be taking good care of our community center. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I just would like to say that I've been teaching government for the last 29 years, and Mrs. Stevenson and Commissioners here talking about having people go out and vote. Yes, the United States is one of the lowest voter turnouts of any industrialized nation in the world. How to turn that around, I'm not sure, because it's been a difficult task the last 29 years trying to get kids interested in government. But hopefully, people will go out and vote, understand the importance. And Commissioner Bunton talked about many countries being ruled by dictatorships, where you don't have a voice. It's important to take advantage of it here in the United States. So, thank you, and that's it.
Thank you. Everybody, pretty much, most everyone who was at the tea alluded to the fact that they had a great time, thanked everybody for being there. I appreciate what you did, I kind of, you came to the show, but I kind of enlisted your help in serving tea and doing other things, including mopping the floor. So, I appreciate everything you did, it was a great turnout, and it was a lot of fun.
That's more mopping than I do at home.
I wanted to make an announcement. August 12th, which is a Sunday, from 1:00 to 4:00, Miller Brothers is going to have their grand opening. There's gonna be free food and entertainment, you'll meet the new owners, and it is also a retirement party for Irene and Bridgette. So they will be there, and the new owners will be there, and everyone's invited to attend. So, from 1:00 to 4:00, it starts at 1:00. And that was what, I figured everybody was gonna make the announcement, because it's been in the paper. And that, so, if you get a chance, stop by, wish Irene luck. I hope we can get her back for the parade, because she was one of our local treasures. So, I'm hoping we're able to, that she'll come back from, I think she's going to Traverse City, and I think also Canada, if I'm not mistaken, she has folks there. mistaken. She has folks there. So hopefully, she will come back. And we can wish the new owners just as much success as Irene had over all these years, and I hope they're able to keep it moving and open. It is an icon for the city. Most of us, when we were younger, we went there also. So it's been around a long time. With that, that's actually all I had. Everyone kind of indicated voting. Those of you who are sitting out there know the importance of it. It'll be too late to be on the cable to remind everybody out there, but do get out there and vote. It's important. And with that, I will need a motion to go into exec session for labor collective bargaining negotiations. I need a motion.
Motion to go into executive session for collective bargaining negotiation.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. 14A, request approval of the July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2021 Crew Leaders Collective Bargaining Agreement. Need a motion?
Move to approve the proposed July 1, 2018, June 30, 2021 Crew Leaders Contract, and authorize the execution of the same.
Support. Any comments, questions? Please call, roll.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Motion passed. 9B, request approval of the July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2021 Maintenance Workers Collective Bargaining Agreement. Need a motion?
Move to approve the proposed July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2021 Maintenance Workers Contract, and authorize the execution of the same.
Support.
Questions, comments? Row call, please.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Fournier?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. I need a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn.